We are about to begin. Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for showing up today. This is a very important meeting for the City of Menifee. Today, we are having our four o'clock special city council meeting for the District Two vacancy. This is the candidate forum for that District Two appointment. We hope everyone's having a happy new year. I will call this meeting to order at 4:01. Let's move on to part two of our agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dynas.
Here.
Councilmember Temple.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Carwin.
Here.
And Mayor Estrada.
And I am here. Thank you very much. In the audience, we have one of our proud Menifee veterans, Larry, sir, one of our veterans who have served in the Navy. Can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir? Thank you, sir. Okay, we are now going to move on to part four of this agenda. This is the City of Menifee District Two vacancy application forum. Madam Clerk, can you please introduce the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I can get perfect, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Stephanie Rosine, City Clerk, here to provide an overview of the candidate forum for the District Two vacancy. For a little background for the public, on December 14th, the City Council certified the 2024 general municipal election, and through those results, Ricky Estrada was elected to the mayor's seat, which created a vacancy in District Two. At the December 17th meeting, the City Council discussed and voted to fill the vacancy by appointment. The appointment process included the request for District Two applicants to fill out a statement of interest form by January 7th, and the city received nine submissions. Those applicants were then invited to attend this meeting to provide statements to the City Council. The City Clerk Department verified all minimum qualifications were met, and each applicant is a registered voter and residing within District Two. For the process this afternoon, following the presentation and any questions from council, I will do a random draw of the nine applicants' names to determine the order of their presentation. Each applicant will be asked to come to the podium one at a time. They will each be allotted three minutes to provide a statement to the City Council. A timer and the questions published with the statement of interest will be on the screens behind us, and following each applicant's statement, the City Council will be able to ask questions of the applicant to help clarify any statements made. Public comments will be heard once the council has heard from each of the applicants. As for the next steps, the full discussion by the City Council in consideration of appointment is agendized for the 6:00 p.m. regular meeting, and during that meeting, the council may choose to make an appointment or continue the matter to February 5th. If an appointment is made this evening, the swearing-in would take place at the February 5th City Council meeting. With that, I'm available for any questions from the City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are going to move on now to questions. This is the question portion. Do any of us on the council have any questions from staff on this? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please start the random drawing of names to determine the order? Thank you.
All right. The first applicant will be Barbara Brawl, followed by Ben Diedrick, followed by Laz Peterson, Richard Sierra, Jeffrey White, Thomas Furman, George Mills, Alty Holcomb, and last is Joe Long.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So next, we will start off with our first applicant, that is Mrs. Brawl. Just as a reminder, applicants have three minutes to provide their presentation. A timer will be set on the screen behind me, and then, following that, that is when the City Council will have any follow-up questions should the council need clarity on anything. All right, we're going to do it like hot bread. Everybody wants that hot bread right when it comes out, so we'll give you the questions right after your presentation. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the first applicant?
Barbara Brawl, if you can join us at the podium.
Welcome, Ms. Brawl.
And as a reminder, the questions are right in front of you, as well as the three-minute timer. There is a button on the podium that can lower it.
Oh, good. Story of my life. Mr. Mayor, City Council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you today. My name is Barbara Brawl, and I reside in the Audi Murphy Ranch development area of District Two. With regard to question number one, I have not lived in Menifee for long, thus I don't have the historical knowledge that others have. However, I do have a great commitment to Menifee. After having lived in Colorado my entire life, I made a conscious and intentional decision to move to Menifee. We bought our house in May of '22, after looking around here for about a year and a half and deciding this was where we wanted to live. But given my extensive previous public service, I believe strongly in giving back to my community, and for that reason, I am interested in being appointed to the Menifee City Council. Question number two. In Colorado, I interacted with constituents on an in-person basis by attending ad hoc neighborhood meetings, weekly public board meetings, community meetings and events, business events, district-wide events, in addition to email newsletters and a website that focused on the work I was performing and projects I was working on, decisions being contemplated and obtaining their input. It is also necessary to engage with fellow governing bodies such as the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog, and the Metro Mayor's Conquest, as well as the state legislature. I have a great deal of experience in building coalitions of interested stakeholders, bringing together those individuals who are impacted by government decisions and working with them to build consensus. Start to number three. The three top issues I believe are facing, the Menifee residents are facing are growth. Growth is happening and will continue to happen, and the question is whether it is uncontrolled growth or strategic growth. And when I get to number five, I will talk about that more. Job creation, and my answers to six and seven address what is needed to address job creation. And then affordability. Affordability of housing and food is an important concern, and the answer to number seven addresses that in more detail as well. Now, with regard to number four, the unique identity, in my opinion, is that Menifee was incorporated, bringing in a number of groups of other communities together in 2008 that were very diverse. And so, Menifee's unique identity is that it is comprised of diverse communities with diverse histories and diverse needs, and approaching its growth needs with thoughtfulness and care will allow Menifee to integrate its past with its future and to do so in a manner that does not disenfranchise any of its residents. The growth. It's a growing city. In fact, it's growing really fast. It's a beautiful location with great weather and close proximity to the coast, and it will continue to grow. People want to live here, and as such, growth and density will happen. The key is to guide it, determine the type of growth we want, and then manage it. Families are moving in, and the need and demand for more housing, amenities, schools, shopping, dining, entertainment, roads will continue. Along with that is employment. Central to a good economy for the city are businesses that provide the types of jobs residents want.
Mrs. Brawl, your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you. It's hard to put this all in three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Brawl. I will now move it back behind the dais. Council, do we have any questions for Mrs. Brawl?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brawl. Madam Clerk, can you please call up the second applicant?
Ben Diedrick.
Okay, Commissioner Diedrick, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ben Diedrick, and I want to represent District Two because I love Menifee. I've lived here for over 10 years, and I also grew up just outside the city limits. I opened my law firm here in Menifee nine years ago, and my daughter goes to Menifee schools. I live here, work here, and play here, goals I want for as many of our residents as possible. I wanted to represent District Two two years ago when I ran in the election, coming in second out of four candidates to now Mayor Estrada. Congratulations, Mayor. And I still want to represent District Two today, which is why I'm here. Ever since moving back to Menifee and opening my firm here, I've thrown myself into community involvement. I got involved with the Chamber of Commerce, was asked to join the board, and worked my way up to vice chair. I served on the board of Santa Rosa Academy. I've been heavily involved with the school district, and I routinely commit my time and resources to local causes. I've served as a planning commissioner for the city for six years now, appointed by two different council members, and I think that shows my ability to work with my peers, and it's helped me up the steep learning curve of working for the city, which, should you appoint me, I believe would allow me to hit the ground running for the two-year term remaining on the District Two seat. In the 30-plus years I've been here, I've seen a huge amount of change and growth, some good, some not so good. The reality is that Menifee is one of the fastest-growing cities in the country, and it makes sense. We have the land to develop, we have a wonderful community of residents, and we're still relatively inexpensive. For better or worse, the state has mandated that we must continue to allow the building of houses whether we want to or not. Development is coming. I believe it is the job of the city to ensure that the growth is done as smart as possible. I think the city plays a vital role in attracting businesses and amenities. Our fellow residents have made it abundantly clear that we do not want more fast food and car washes. It falls on all of us to attract high-paying jobs, entertainment options, and more diverse dining options. We want those things here, and we need to let those businesses know that Menifee is where they should be. It's vitally important for a well-rounded city to offer a variety of housing options. We all love the large, single-family homes and ranches, but we're not all in the position to obtain those. We are a multicultural, multi-generational community with different needs, from senior citizens that need affordable housing, to our young community members that are graduating high school, graduating from MSJC, that also need affordable housing so they can remain here in Menifee. In that regard, I believe the top three issues facing Menifee residents are a lack of quality jobs, the need for more diverse entertainment options, and ever-growing traffic. City Council must address these issues by attracting higher-paying jobs, that people can work locally instead of commuting, by providing incentives to encourage new entertainment venues, local restaurants, and mom-and-pop stores, and to continue funding our infrastructure, like the recently opened Holland Overpass. In closing, I think Menifee's unique identity is its community. Unlike our neighbors, we don't have a specific focal point, like a lake or winery, to attract people. Instead, we have a wonderful community. Just this week, the Community Cupboard made a call for volunteers to come bag food items for Quail Valley residents. When I showed up, there was more people there than they could use. That's our unique identity, is our community.
Mr. Diedrick, your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Diedrick. Madam Clerk, can you... Oh, I'm sorry. I got a little excited. Does the council have any questions? Okay, from Mayor Pro Tem Carwin.
Thank you. Commissioner Diedrick, I've had a number of residents approach me asking whether or not you actually live in District Two. Can you clarify that for us?
Sure. 303-61 Town Square Drive in Town Center, yes.
That is indeed in District Two, right?
Yes.
All right. Just wanted to make sure, because I've had more than one person ask me about that. You've moved in the city a couple of times.
Correct.
You currently live in District Two.
Correct. I lived in Audi Murphy Ranch for years, which is when I ran two years ago. Then I moved to your district for one, your Russler's Ranch, and then, for the last year, I've lived in Town Square.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other council members? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call up the third applicant, please?
Laz Peterson.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. Thanks for having us all out today. You know, I'd like to share some thoughts about District Two, about Menifee. I speak for many of my fellow D2 residents that, you know, people have moved in in the past 10 years. They kind of had some expectations that were a little bit more than what we have right now. The time involved, you know, we got to see some, actually, some very exciting commercial opportunities fall apart. Some retail and entertainment businesses changed plans. Residential construction has been seen and heard all over town, but yet, we don't exactly have what we need for the people that came here. You know, we've roughly tripled our population over the past 15, 20 years, you know, give or take whatever the census says. But, you know, we have a lot of people here that are hungry to spend their money in this city, and they don't have anywhere to spend it. You know, I mean, we've got essentially lack of retail, lack of entertainment, lack of options, you know, for medical, let's say, for a specialist. You know, my family drives an hour round trip to go to take our children to a certain medical specialist, and, you know, I mean, that's just kind of unacceptable as far as a city our size. You know, we have some issues with our economic development, with high leasing costs for our commercial properties. You know, we don't want people... We have commercial developers that don't want to build here because of the obvious reasons, that it's just too expensive, you know, and nobody's going to take the space. You know, I mean, we all go to Menifee, or, sorry, we all go to Marietta, we go to Temecula, we go to Lake Elsinore for spending our money. That tax dollars, they could go to our hungry city of Menifee, you know? I mean, we could use that money. We just can't, we just don't have the option to, like, actually bring it in. You know, I mean, we've got a few increase in nuisances, traffic, speeding, all that stuff, you know? I mean, that's part of a growing city, you know? But the quality of life has kind of seen a little bit of a dip since we moved here in 2015. You know, we actually put our roots here. The idea was that, you know, Menifee is our forever town, and it will be. And, you know, the one thing that, you know, as far as amenities go, I mean, we can't find a park with lights, or a park with parking, when we need to have something that we can use that's a Menifee amenity. So, there's a lot of things that we've got to work on. You know, I mean, I've got the list here. Some of those things, you know, I mean, I put it in my documentation, but, yeah, I mean, the reality is that, you know, when we moved here, there were blue skies. I mean, that's figuratively and literally speaking. And over the past three years, you know, since we'd lived here, 2018, 2019, you know, the skies, they were a dingy brown color. And also, the Menifee vision was a little bit lost, you know? Watching everything kind of crumble during COVID times, we have not recovered, and it doesn't look like we will, you know? And our city staff, they're tasked with the unfortunate job of making everything work without the resources to do that. And, you know, the people want it. People deserve it, and that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson.
Hang on, Laz.
All right.
Tried to skip out on me.
I was trying to skip out on you.
But, as I recall, you served as treasurer to Mayor Estrada's campaign in the last round?
I did.
Were you the treasurer when he ran for District Two the first time?
I was not.
Okay, so, having just served as treasurer for the mayor's campaign, do you think that you have the ability to set that aside and have independent decision-making power on the dais, or are you going to defer to the mayor's point of view?
I think that I, you know, will easily defer to my own judgment. He and I butt heads on a few matters, but, you know, there's a few things we do agree on, obviously. But, you know, I mean, if you want to know my honest opinion, there's a room full of people here that are well-qualified, and, you know, I implore the council to look into each and every one of them, because everybody offers a very unique set of skills and experiences, you know? So, you know, I'm just here to give my opinion and to stand up and say that I'm willing to serve.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other council members have any questions? Alrighty. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call up the fourth applicant?
Richard Sierra.
Welcome, Mr. Sierra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. esteemed council, honored guests and applicants. My name is Richard Sierra, and I'd like to be considered for the position of district member for District Two. I'm a lifelong resident of Southern California. I've served 26 years on active duty in the United States Marine Corps, having retired just two years ago. My family had been all over the world, and we decided to set down roots. We chose Menifee because of proximity to the local amenities. My family is from the region. We emigrated here from Mexico, through Mexico, four generations ago, and established ourselves in the Inland Empire in Riverside County, building the 215, and working in the orchards that are no longer present in Riverside. As my commer... came to a close, I found that this community met my family's needs because of everything that has been said before, the proximity to amenities, the natural beauty, and the affordability of the region. I approached this opportunity and wanted to represent the district, not only as a proud resident that keeps his finger on the pulse, but also as a concerned father and an interested citizen. My kids go to school, in the public school system here. My adult son, who is autistic, has found services and employment within the region, and it's safe for him to commute back and forth from the house to his place of work, and I would like to see that endure. I'm no stranger to challenges. As a member of the United States Marine Corps, in a time of war, I've been able to network and be able to build coalitions of the willing and not-so-willing to work together to solve problems. And that diverse background, I think, will be beneficial to the city in general. My community involvement involves being a paid member at large for VFWs, because I migrated between so many different cities. I found it hard to find a home, but I am a member. I volunteer for Red, White, and Blue, where I rehabilitate damaged homes, especially homes in Riverside County that have been affected by the floods and rains that come out of the desert. I volunteer for Toys for Tots, and most recently, Reach Across America, where I was invited to speak at the National Cemetery in Marion, Indiana. The top three issues, as I see it, facing Menifee residents are consolidating the school district underneath one district. It's an administrative burden to have two bifurcated systems, where schools have to compete with schedules, and parents have to add that extra travel and transit time and release time to go into their commute before they go to work, and then when they're coming home to pick up their kids. Improving infrastructure, traffic abatement, and just in general, reducing congestion for our commuters. It needs to be safe for pedestrians, our growing e-vehicles, the kids that ride their e-bikes and e-scooters, as well as pedestrians. Also, taking into account that we have a large elderly population, we need to make sure the roadways and the byways are safe for them as well. And then, increasing homelessness. We're starting to see the migration of itinerant personnel that come in here. Either we have the resources to support them, or we know how to divest or migrate that problem to other agencies that are better positioned and qualified to solve that problem. But recognizing that it is a growing concern is something I think this council needs to address. I envision Menifee's unique identity to be a family-centered veteran family community that offers a unique balance between small-town feel with big-city amenities, and housing is not as affordable or available.
Mr. Sierra, your three minutes are up.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Sierra. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Sierra?
Okay. Has anybody gotten past number four yet? I don't think so.
I think Mr. Diedrick got close.
Yeah, and Barbara was close, because she was screaming along there. She was going pretty good. You work in 29 Palms?
That's correct, sir.
So, tell me how you plan to balance that with serving the city, the time that we need council members here during times of need, meetings, things like that?
It's a great question. Thank you for asking. My primary concern here is, as I start reevaluating my life, and also, new year, new me, right? My wife, who's present right now, is looking to re-enter the workforce, and part of that obligation is for her to be able to go to school at the community college here to get her accounting degree. I would remove myself from the government service work role at 29 Palms and be here and either do telework, or I'd find local employment within the area. I'm retired. I have a generous compensation package for my time in service and also my disability. I would definitely be available to support whatever initiatives are available or on the table for the council to meet the city's needs.
Yeah, and thank you for your service. You've got an impressive service record. Have you considered running for the school board? Because a lot of the issues that you mentioned aren't really under the purview of the city council. The school board has their own concerns with dealing with school times and release dates and those kinds of things. Have you considered that?
I did. At that time, we were talking about her, my wife, rejoining the workforce, and me becoming Mr. Mom Stay-at-Home, right? But I also realized that that topic that we're talking about right now is also part of the strategic vision in the 2025 strategic plan for the city. So it seems that they're in natural alignment to try to bring those under one umbrella, understanding that there's going to be other concerns, the teachers' union being one of them, there's two interested labor parties there, and how do we elegantly come to a solution that's amenable to everybody, but more specifically, the people that live here?
Well, because we don't pay the teachers.
That's correct.
The teachers' union does negotiate with us, and also, the consolidation of the school districts also isn't really our thing.
That's right.
So, but those are excellent issues, and I hope you pursue them. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other council members with questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call up the next speaker, please?
Jeffrey White.
Is Mr. White present? Scanning the room. I do not see a Mr. White raising a hand nor standing in presence. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next speaker?
Thomas Furman.
Mr. Furman, welcome.
And I say, welcome to you. You've got a tough job ahead of you. You've got a wonderful bevy of people to select from, and I'm going to make your job a little bit easier. I am withdrawing my name from consideration. Thank you.
Did Mr. White get to you?
Thank you, Mr. Furman. We appreciate your participation for the time it lasted. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please go on to the next applicant?
George Mills.
Okay, Mr. Mills, welcome.
Thank you, council. I appreciate it. First off, I want to say that I have lived in Menifee for most of the last 38 years, 27 of those years in District Two. Over the last six to eight years, we have seen unprecedented housing growth. While at times I would like to see the housing growth slow down, I am not anti-home building. My community involvement is long and deep, from one of the founding dads to bring Little League baseball to Menifee in 1993, to sitting and serving in the Menifee Valley Chamber of Commerce Board Directors, including Chairman of the Board for two years. I currently sit as a Board of Director and Board of Governors for Southwest Healthcare, Rancho Springs, and Inland Valley Hospitals. I currently sit on the Boys and Girls Club Board as well. I volunteer for the Rock Your Red event, which provides stroke and heart education and raises funds for the American Heart Association. I am the current President of the Rotary Club of Menifee. My top goals for the city would obviously be traffic. While the Holland Bridge has helped, the fact that there is really only one viable east-west corridor for most of the cars driving through our city, Newport Road is not enough. Scott Road needs to be widened, and I know it's on the table, but it needs to be expedited. Growth. Menifee is going to continue to grow whether we like it or not. As far as the city bringing in business, why is Menifee the donut hole in the area where all the cities around us are growing? Just look one street to the south. We have Home Depot, Costco, Ross. Look at Winchester and Domengoni. We have, and further to the south, at Thompson Road and Benton Roads, Hemet and Elsinore are building. What are we doing wrong? We need to figure it out soon, or it will all be apartments demanded by the state of California. Healthcare. The Menifee Hospital is an embarrassment to the boomtown we are living in. Thank God, we have great healthcare to our neighbors, with our neighbors to the south. Menifee needs to be pushing hard to bring in quality doctors, medical healthcare groups, and a world-class hospital. We need medical offices and clinics, so we do not need to travel to Marietta, Temecula, Moreno Valley, or Riverside. Quality of life. We need to have more open spaces and parks. District Two is very underprivileged in this area. Unless you live in a newer neighborhood, you do not have a park or a tot lot. In my opinion, the Planning Commission has failed District Two on this one. I also support the Menifee Police Department 100% and Measure DD. District Two is really the most diverse district in the city. We have extreme wealth from areas like Audi Murphy and Calder Ranch to the neighborhoods of Quail Valley, where there are very narrow one-way streets, and the hope that one day EMWD will finish the sewer lines so they can be rid of their septic tanks. Let's not forget Cottonwood Canyon, the groves off Sterns and Sherman, and the neighborhood off of Geary. We have a very dense-populated area with apartments and condos, and a central park that is too small to hold any kind of
Mr. Mills.
function of size.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Mills?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call up the next applicant?
Alty Holcomb.
Mr. Holcomb, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and city staff. I want to thank you all for the opportunity for allowing me to speak with you today. I'm seeking an appointment, because I believe that I can lend a unique voice to city leadership. I've lived in Menifee for over 15 years now. I previously served in the city's I previously served on the city's Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission, and over the last decade-plus, I've established good working relationships with elected and a variety of other, appointed and other officials throughout our region, which I believe, if appointed, will serve our city very well. Examples of my past and current members, community organization memberships include, like I just mentioned, serving on the city's Parks, Recreation, Trails Commission, being a former board member of the Boys and Girls Club of Menifee, being a committee member for the MSJC Citizens Bonds Oversight Committee for Measure AA just a few years ago, and being a proud member, a longtime proud member of VFW Post 1956 here in Menifee. Really proud of that. The top three issues I see facing our city include the need for more retail, entertainment, and dining options. By our own city's estimation, we're losing millions upon millions of dollars because our residents are going to neighboring cities and spending their money. And I like to spend our money, I know my wife here would like to spend our harder money here in our city to help fund our fire department, to help fund our police department, to help fund our public works and infrastructure in our city. That's something that we desperately need, and that, we're past time to start to establish those things in our city. The second need, I believe, is the need for our city to carve out its own unique identity within a larger region here. I want in Menifee, our city, to be known as more than just a bedroom community, or that city, that relatively new city that's just north of Marietta and Temecula. We need more, and I know we can do it. And the third pressing issue, I believe, in our city is the need for smart and balanced growth. I'm all for more homes and more rooftops, I think we need it to, in order to accommodate our growing population, but I'm also of the mindset that we do not need to cover every inch of Menifee with concrete. We have a need for open spaces, parks, and trails in our city. And I think that's something that we can establish, if we could find that sweet spot between honoring our semi-rural and rural past while also accommodating new rooftops, new homes, I think that's something that we can achieve. What is Menifee's unique identity? I'm not going to take too much time in doing that, discussing that, because I put it in there, but I do have a closing statement with my last 20-something seconds here. Yesterday, I had a, a long conversation with a Menifee resident, and she ended that conversation, she told me, quote, "I want Menifee to be a city with a small-town feel, yet still one that is forward-thinking," end quote. I know together we can do that, and if appointed, I certainly want to be a part of that vision, while honoring the past with a mind forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Holcomb? All right, Bob.
Mr. Holcomb, I know that you served on our Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission, and I also know that you resigned your position there kind of midterm.
Yes.
And now you're coming back for city council with your interest in that. What changed in your ability to serve on that commission due to time constraints and commitments, things like that, that's different now?
Yeah, well, what changed, Mayor Pro Tem Carwin, is that I, I have a new job. We certainly got more grandkids, so that's part of what kind of weighed us down last time. But I got a new job, and I have more time and opportunity to do things. So, when it comes to meeting time commitments or being on council subcommittee or going to something like SCAG or WR Cog with the, my new job, I'll certainly have the time and opportunity and space and allowance to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's not going to be a problem.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other questions? Hearing none. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Joe Long.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Long.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your hearing, and I would like to say good, good afternoon to all esteemed citizens. Yeah, thank you. As a candidate for city council, my platform is now quality of life. I think it is time for us to refocus our priorities. We need to bring more healthy living environment for our communities. We need to preserve our small-town charms, which brings community together, connections together, and we are very proud of our heritage. So, right now, for major problems that we are facing right now, the number-one issue is traffic problems. Yes, right now, we only have one east-west road, main road, that's Newport Road. So, we really need more east-west roads. I would like to say thank you to the city council for completing the Holland Overpass. It's getting crowded, crowdier and crowdier. We need more access, accessibility from east to west. And also, not only that, but vertical, north-south, we really need to expand Marietta, Menifee, all, all the roads going north-south, so that local residents can go around without having to get on the major Newport Road. Another issue is public safety. Right now, because of our growing population, we have a lot of security problems. So, we really need to support our police department, our fire department. Right now, Southern California, we have Wi-Fi everywhere, and so, we really need to hold annual or semi-annual disaster management preparingness, preparation for community, we really need it. And coming from San Diego, I, I, I used to attend for high school every new year, new terms. Law enforcement always come to high school to hold workshop, traffic workshop, that's what we need. Working, if we can coordinate with the local school district, every new term, local enforcement should hold a traffic safety workshop. We are hearing a lot of problems with e-bikes, kids riding e-bikes.
Mr. Long, your time is up.
I have a long list, but.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Long? Okey-dokey, hearing none. Madam Clerk, that was the last applicant, correct? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak, or has any correspondence been received?
No correspondence has been received, and I do not have any public speakers.
Okay, no public speakers, no correspondence. This is a reminder for the public that the council will not pick up a discussion about the candidates. We will carry on that discussion at our 6 o'clock meeting. The public is invited to come to that meeting to hear our discussion on the District Two appointment. Okay, council, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at this time, it is 4:38. Thank you for everyone in attendance.